We'll begin with that.
Thank you, sir. I'm Jim Fearborn. I'm the city manager. For those of you who haven't been here in a long time.[10.11][10.11](Laughter). I was telling councilmembers Barbara and Morehead that we could start by introducing ourselves again.[16.21][16.21](Laughter). It seems like so long. Yes, we're beginning tonight with an overview of the chaplains program, so I will turn it over to Chief Zimmerman.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn. I do want to, Mr. Fearborn's going to indulge me just for a second, to mention that we just started the new tow rotation program today, in which we're opening up to individual tow companies throughout the community to participate in that rotation. And we will call those tow companies as we work our way down the list. And they can get into that rotation at any point in time, you know, any time during the year. And we've only got two companies so far, but I did wear my tow rotation badge today, just so that you all could see. And the individuals who've been authorized to participate in the rotation will wear one of these badges when they come out to participate in that and respond to police tow. So, I know it's not on the agenda, but I did want to mention that we just started that today, effective June 1st. So, yes, sir?
Is there any type of requirement that the tow company have a physical location within the city limits, or like a tow lot, or a place for the cars to be picked up?
Yes.
Okay, so, but, okay, fair enough.
But as I said, I just did want to mention, I'm sorry, go ahead. Just that, you know, we were starting that today, and, you know, we had sent out, there's a, a application process that's similar to our solicitor's permits, and there are a number of requirements that the tow companies, including a business license within the city of Raymore, and all those types of things, criminal history background check, and things like that, in order to be vetted to participate in the program. And that's not only the company, that's all of the individual drivers as well. So, they won't be allowed to tow if they show up at the scene of a wreck without wearing one of these badges.
And thank you. You just answered part of my question. I, I, that's, that's glory of shutting up.[141.12][141.12](Laughter). Has there been notices sent out to the different carriers? Because I personally have been approached or had a conversation with one of the area tow companies about a, a different policy that we, that we could have, and this is it. And I'm just kind of curious if contacts have been made to area, area carriers? I'd say carriers, but tow companies?
Yes, we, we sent out invitations to vendors all throughout the area because we are allowing a 15-mile radius on the Missouri side, because of the state laws that are different, obviously, in Missouri than they are in Kansas. We invited the vendors within that 15-mile radius to, to participate in the, in the process. As I said, we've only gotten two so far, but there isn't any requirement that they did this before we started on June 1st. So, they can jump into the rotation anytime. Okay, thank you. As Mr. Fearborn said, we really appreciate the opportunity to come out tonight and talk to you a little bit about the chaplains program. I, I will let J.C. Beckner, you know, do the majority of this presentation, but I do want to say, just, you know, based on my past history, and of course, you all know where I came from, from Kansas City, Missouri P.D., our, our chaplains there in Kansas City were largely ceremonial in, in the way that they were deployed to events and, and special occasions and things like that. I will absolutely say that nothing could be further from that than what we have here in the chaplains program here in Raymore. They are so engaged, and I feel so fortunate that these individuals are out there not only supporting the police department, but also the community as well, because they do so much more above and beyond just what involves the police department that, you know, I'm very proud of the program, and, and a lot of the credit, obviously, goes to J.C. We've been working very hard on this since I got here in 2012, and, and it has just really metamorphosized into such a great, great community asset, as well as to the police department. So, I'll turn it over to J.C., and he's going to tell you about all of the things that they're doing, both in the community and with the police department.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to come and share with you. One of the things I would like to, to do is, is say what drives this, what drives who we are. And when I was first contacted about the possibility of being involved in chaplaincy, one of the questions I asked was, where do we go to get training? And there was no training. And that's not Jan. There just wasn't anything out there. And I said, "What? You know, chaplains do have no training, and we ought to have that." And the comment was, "Well, whatever you want to do, go ahead." So, I began looking for an organization that would help train chaplains and do it in a right way. International Conference of Police Chaplains, which I put up here, they, they develop professional chaplains through dynamic education and support. And if it, if it was not for International Conference Police Chaplains, I'm not so sure we would be down the road where we need to be. We'd be learning by trial and error, so to speak. And that's not always good when we're talking about these kinds of things. One of the things that I appreciate about this organization is they're very, they're very astute in the type of training they want. One of the things they do is they provide advice, training to our members through regional annual events, not just the annual events, but four times a year, they do training, which I think is great. We have estimated care to 960,000 officers and their families, civilian employees, as well as law enforcement agencies. The second thing you'll find about this group is that there are over 17,000 law, which I did not know this initially, 17,000 law enforcement agencies in the United States alone. It's estimated that 50% of those law enforcement agencies have no type of chaplaincy program or any access to chaplains to help them. So, one of the things that we wanted to do was to help all of our agencies in Missouri. I, I serve as the ICPC State Representative for Region 7 in Missouri. And so, part of what I've been charged to do is go to police departments, talk to them about chaplaincy, how could this help you? Would you consider this? Leaving them for information, how would we start a police chaplaincy? In your booklet, your folder provided this. And this information really tells you what are the right ways to establish a chaplaincy that makes a difference within your community. I'm not going to go through it and read it. You all are intelligent individuals. You can do that on your own, at your, at your leisure. One of the things that, that is another, I think, plus, it's unfortunate that we have deaths in law enforcement, but it happens. And one of the things I learned through ICPC that I did not know about, I'm not sure if Jan knew about this till I brought this to her, she may have known this, but this company provides a vault and a service for law enforcement officers free of charge if they're killed in the line of duty. And it doesn't make any difference where they are in the country. They can call, the chief would have to call and verify it. They would call a local casket company and provide the vault, not the casket, but the vault, with any kind of declaration they want on that. And then at the graveside, they also will provide a service of no charge to them. And that's, that's a benefit that a lot of people in law enforcement, I find out, didn't even know that it existed and it's out there. And so, I'm glad to know about that. I hope we don't ever have to use that here, but it's a big plus to a family, that's for sure. One of the other things that, that I just want to share with you about ICPC, here's a map. We're national and international. We're, ICPC is known around the world. We're in Region 7, which is the yellow, which includes Texas, and Kansas, Oklahoma, Missouri, Arkansas, and I think that's Louisiana down there. And I'm not seeing so good right here, but I believe that's correct. Our region has a, a fall and spring meeting, and we go to training. And all the training that we do is related to how do we help law enforcement officers? I am big in training, and I feel like we need to have training to know what we need to be doing. And in the basic track to be trained, you have an introduction to law enforcement, which is, you'll see on the screen. We deal in death notifications. Just this week, we had another death notification. One of our chaplains, but we want our officers to do that death notification. So glad he was there. Our officers do a great job in that. And by the way, one of the things that I learned also from ICPC and the training was that there are families that could be helped in our neighborhood with things like this. So, we developed this brochure specifically for Raymore, which has a, a note from Jan in the case of a death. She has a note in there, and, and then we have a place for the officer and chaplain who's on duty. And this basically goes through and says, here's the kind of things that you need to know about. I don't know about you, but if you've ever lost a loved one, at a time when that happens, there first, there's shock, and then there's anger, and there's all these emotions that people go through. So, what we try to do is help them identify things they need to be aware of. If they have to call a medical examiner, who is it? What are the numbers? We put that information in here. What are some important details? Well, you need to contact your bank. You need to contact social security. You know that you can't keep getting checks after that loved one's dying. If you do, you've got to pay that back. There's all this information that we've provided for them here within this. We also, on page six, give them lifestyle tips for people in grief. Here's some things you need to remember to do in the, in the process of grief. We also have a place for them to make notes, and we sit down and actually go through that with them, then check back at a later point in time to say, "How are you doing? Is there anything else we can help you do?" Most people that we've provided this for have just said, "Thank you. We need, we didn't know how to do this kind of stuff. Thank you. This has been a big help." So, when a citizen in need, if we're contacted and we go, we take this as a brochure and sit down and go through this with them after the initial notification. I have seen officers sit down and share the death notification with people. And by the way, you don't go in and say, "There's a right and a wrong way to do that." You don't go and say, "By the way, your loved one passed away." It sounds crude and sounds mean, but you really need to let them know what's happened. And so, what you do is you go, "I'm sorry to tell you this, but your, your loved one that you care about died." We may not know details, but we go into that. I've seen people that have responded in ways of just complete utter shock. I've seen people swing their hands in frustration, "This is not true. You're lying." You never know what you're going to get. And that's why two officers should always be there, and that's why two officers would go and do death notifications, as long as come along with chaplains. The other things we did in the basic track is deal with stress management. You all get stressed? I can tell you, police officers get stressed in more ways than you can imagine. I've listened to police officers as they've responded to people who they've stopped, and citizens who have cussed them up one side, down the other. They have held their tongue, they have been nice, cordial. You deal with that day in and day out, and it gets old really quick. So, some of you may know about that. SISAM, which is post-shooting trauma situations, courses in that that we take. Ceremonies and events. Ceremonies, how do you do funerals? Events like how do you honor those that are fallen dead? We do that in May. What are the legal liability confidentiality requirements that you, as a chaplain, can and cannot do when you're with a, a police officer? So, those are, those are some of the first things that we do in that class. And then the continuation of basic track, ethics. Do we talk about what officers tell us? Absolutely not. There's only one instance where we could go to the chief and say, "I think you need to be concerned." If an officer is threatening suicide, I would definitely go and talk with the chief about that. Other issues, we keep that confidential. Responding to a crisis situation. Law enforcement family, how do you deal with the families? It's not just the officer, but his wife, they're under a great amount of stress, and their kids. Substance abuse, not just in the neighborhood, but substance abuse with officers, it's big. I don't know if you know it or not. Suicide is a really big issue with police officers, with all the stuff they deal with. Officer injury or death. I don't know if you remember the, the young man named Daniel in Springfield, Missouri, that was shot back in January. He was on duty and had went to a car to, to apprehend a, a person in a car, and the guy shot him in the head. And I happened to be on the way to meet with the Springfield Police Department and talk about their chaplaincy program when all of that was taking place. That man survived and is, will never work again, but the injury that he sustained, he's going to be crippled for the rest of his life. And so, what happens? And do we forget them? And how do we help them? The other thing that we cover in this, sensitivity and adversity, how are we sensitive to the needs of people? How are we sensitive to culture? For instance, in our chaplains group, we have Protestants that are involved. We do not have a Catholic priest as a part of our group. However, if we have a family that is Catholic that we're dealing with, and I've dealt with this on more than one occasion, I ask them, "Do you have a, a father or priest that you would like for me to call?" I would be glad to call them, have them come, and they do that, and I make that call, and they come and respond to them at the hospital. It's not that we don't want somebody there, we just don't have anybody that's willing to fulfill that need at this point in time. So, those are some of the things in the basic track that, by the way, when I talk about basic track, all those, those 12-hour courses probably take somewhere around 40-plus hours to go through. And so, we start eight in the morning and go to eight at night, and that's usually a week-long process that we do that in. My basic training took place in Texas when I did this, and that was an interesting experience. We talk about that we need to have a ministry of presence. If you look at the screen, there's somebody who has a ministry of presence. She is in more places than I've ever seen a police chief in my life, coming and going. And we talk about officers need to have a presence. Chaplains, in the same sense, need to have a presence with officers, or there's no credibility. By the same token, there's no training. There's really not much credibility there either. So, we feel it necessary to do that kind of thing. Besides the ministry of presence, we talk about Raymore chaplains. We have this group. We have one that has, since this picture taken, has chosen to move out of this role, not because he doesn't want to, but his stress load has been too great. He said, "If there's a death call and I need to fill in for somebody, I'll be glad to be contacted and do that." This is the group. Right now, they're next to the very end. Rich Matthews is no longer here. He is gone, but other than that, everybody is still there, and I appreciate that group. We did training in death notification with our, our chaplains, and the way we did this was we actually brought, I created, I guess, like five or six different scenarios, and then sent chaplains to do death notifications. And I gave the people what they were supposed to do. They were supposed to refuse to let them in. By the way, in death notification, the first thing you do when you arrive on the scene, it's, you know, a plan for you to win. You talk to the person, you try to get in the house. You want to get everybody there to sit down and tell everybody at the same time, "I'm quickly going through this," but there's processes you go through. And then you're staying there, and you're helping them deal with that issue. So, we had six different scenarios set up. One of them, we had the gun shop here in Raymore, and that was a very interesting scenario, for sure. This was a home residence. We had three other businesses that we went to. Actually, we had another home we went to in Belton. Officers went with the chaplains. They went out and did these death notifications. This was role play. Here's what I heard from chaplains. That was really hard, because some of them had not done it this way before. And what I heard from those who participated said, "I hope I never have to do this, because this was terrible, to have to go through this, experience the role play that. That was hard for them." Trust me, we, we get to do that, and someday, I hope we're not knocking on your door, but that, that's a very real possibility. And officers are great at helping and going along with us. Raymore Ghostbusters. I told you that officers have a presence. Several years ago, when we had a Halloween event at First Baptist Church, one of our officers showed up in his Ghostbusters uniform, and I thought, "How appropriate." He's still on payroll, still here. He hasn't taken a movie role, so I appreciate him.[1057.66][1057.66](Laughter). We, and now, before you pass judgment on this person, let me, let me tell you that dispatchers, I've sat and listened to them take calls. I've sat and listened to people who have blessed them out. I've sat and listened to people who were in tears, and they were walking them through what to do next. They're under tremendous stress. And you maybe not realize it, but you go and sit for 12 hours a shift and listen to all the calls that come in, and then deal with all the things they deal with. They're jewels for what they do, and I appreciate them so much. So, we try to help them. We try to help them relax. And one day, during Halloween, this mask came out, and Rodney says, "Let me put that on." You know, relieving the stress. Really, he's very competent, so don't, don't look at that in a wrong way. I asked that all of our chaplains go through the Citizens Academy to be a support to our police department, but also to go through the training that our officers offered. I want to tell you, they offered excellent training, and every citizen ought to take advantage of this and go through it. It was a tremendous experience in doing that. That was two or three, three years ago, maybe. I, I don't remember the exact time. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I didn't say that. And yeah, it's the room that's now the dispatch room downstairs. What are, what are these up here for? Ride-alongs, chaplain ride-alongs. How many of you in here have ever done a ride-along with a police officer? Anybody? We've got two or three. I want to tell you, it's a unique experience to do that. You see the community from a different perspective. And when officers stop and they tell you, "Stay in the car, don't get out," whatever, you do what they tell you. That's their office. You don't touch stuff in the vehicle. And one of the things that I say to an officer, "Hey, I'm yours tonight. I'm doing whatever you say. If you want me to get out of the wheel, if you want me not to touch anything, I will. If you want me to touch something, I will." Certain conditions there. But, but I'll do whatever you ask me to do. It's their office, and I need to respect that. And so, our, our chaplains know that. But in the ride-alongs, I've done things like taking families aside and talking to them while officers talk with a specific individual person. I spent some time with kids who were pretty disturbed at, at sites. I've walked into homes where people have died as a result of whatever, physical, physical difficulties. And I've seen officers' eyes get big, some for the first time, they've never seen a person dead laying around with blood everywhere. It's, it's an interesting experience, is what I would like to say. And, and doing that, what we're trying to do is say to the officer, "We appreciate who you are. We really do want to support you in what you're doing. If you want to talk, fine." And I sure can't tell you about all the ride-along experiences, and I'm not going to tell you about conversations, but our guys and gals that are out there are really committed to the job, and they take a lot of abuse, and I'm just so proud for what they do. So, do a ride-along sometime. Just fill out an application. Do it. You need to do it. I challenge you. It'll change your prayer life in some aspects, anyway, if you have that. Detective work. We have detectives that work hard here. I appreciate what they do, and they toil and toil and toil, and sometimes the rewards pay off big time, and that's really cool. Like, I guess it was about three years ago, we had completed a new building, and on top of our building, we had these huge air conditioning units. And some guy decided one night to tear them up, and I didn't figure we'd ever find out who had done it, and the copper they'd stole. But you know what? These guys worked and worked, and they discovered who it was. He didn't go to court. Insurance companies took care of us, but also the guys in jail for what he did. So, I am, I tell you, I didn't know how they would ever find this guy, but they did. Traced him down, and it was awesome. Last thing I'd like to just kind of tell you, talk to you about is the importance of a police presence. What would Raymore be like without the importance of a police presence here? What would your city be like without police here? I can tell you, it'd be a bad place. Would not be a good place. Do you appreciate their presence? And when you see them, and they're just doing their job, and they pull you over because you were exceeding the speed limit, you need to thank them and say, "You know, officer, thank you very much." I've told our church people, "If you get pulled over by a police officer, and you tell them that they know me, or you know me, I'm going to tell the police officer right on the ticket anyway." That's no excuse. That's no excuse. Last, last slide. A ministry of presence. ICPC has helped me to understand a lot more about what we need to have as a presence. The last thing I will tell you is that we have this Bible. Where our ICPC, our group and, and our chaplains group has purchased a number of these Bibles. We're giving them to the chaplains free of charge. There is no expectations to take one at the very back. There are articles written by police officers for police officers. And we give them to them, and, and so, so far, there's been several that have taken those, others I think are going to, just haven't had the opportunity to get them yet. So, there's a lot. A whole bunch more I could say. I know you've got things you need to do. But just briefly, do you have any questions? Have any thing you'd like to ask? Don't know if I can answer it, but I'll try.
I do want to say one more thing about the program, that I know J.C. and the other chaplains struggled in the beginning, you know, coming to roll calls, and, and as J.C. said, there's a schedule where they get called out. They are on call, but they, even when they're, they're not actually, you know, being called out to a specific event, you know, they're still coming to roll calls, they're still interacting with the officers, they're still riding along, and I would encourage all of you all to ride along as well. But in the beginning, they struggled with, you know, "We're not part of the family. We're not part of the group. You know, the officers won't want me in the car with them." And, and I think that they have absolutely transcended that, because they are part of the family. And the officers look forward to having the chaplains, you know, jump in the car and ride with one of them, you know, whether it's for an entire shift or just for a couple of hours. Because, you know, it is an opportunity to interact with, you know, no longer are they outsiders. They are absolutely, they understand the culture. As J.C. said, they have done everything to educate themselves about, you know, what we do and what police work is all about. And so, it's just like having a second crew in the car with them, you know, much different than it was in the beginning. Anybody have any questions of either one of us? Yes, sir?
Not so much a question, but more of a comment. I remember speaking with, with Chief Zimmerman here a couple months ago, specifically about our chaplain program, and I was, the, the excitement that came out of Chief Zimmerman was astonishing, you know, and, and the way she spoke about it so passionately, and she spoke very highly of J.C., and I, I learned a lot during that 20, 30-minute conversation that I had no clue about. And I, I'm going to say, I appreciate, and I personally thank you for everything you've done, your passion, your drive, your commitment, and, and what you do for our city. Thank you. And for our officers, on behalf of them. I know that it's a, a great service, what you provide, and I, I have nothing but congratulations, and know that what you're going to do is really, really good things, not just for our city, but the state and the whole Region 7 that, that you are president of, and congratulations on being elected to that. I appreciate you bringing Chaplain J.C. in and giving this report. You know, this is one thing that we did talk about, and, and Chief Zimmerman did tell me that, you know, she was planning on, on this. One thing that, that proved to me as, without ever meeting J.C. before, is that, and it's been said here in, in our printed literature, and also what they said tonight, is that his training is on his own pocket. You know, and this is one thing that I addressed with, with Chief Zimmerman at that time, too, is that I am appreciative of that, but the service that we get out of that, I think that I would like, as myself, as a council member and representative of the people that I represent, that we have a mechanism to reimburse this program in the budget, and that we fund this, because I think it is that valuable, and that's the commitment that I'm going to give to this program as a representative of the city. And I'm going to ask my colleagues, all of you sitting here, to, to consider that, and I'll, I'll speak with, with Jim tomorrow night on our one-on-one, in request that somehow or another, this be reflected in, in the budget. And when those discussions come up, that that is there, because, like I say, I appreciate everything J.C.'s doing. God bless him. God bless him. I mean that from the bottom of my heart. And I just, I, I think that we have so much to gain out of this, and I think we should be morally and ethically funding this out of our city coffers.
Well, I appreciate that vote of confidence. Funding or not, we're, we're going to do what we feel like, guys, call us to do. And this was not about, we didn't come for the issue of funding. I just, I count it a privilege to be able to serve police officers here. It really is a passion of mine, so I'm grateful to do it. Thank you. I'm going to leave this Bible, so if you want to pass it around and look at, you can. There's, there's, again, as I said, comments at the back of this by police officers, for police officers. And Jan, when you're done tonight, if you just pick that up, I'd appreciate it. And I assume that you would presume for me to just leave, and I don't have to stay here. Is that, is that right?
Unless you're really interested in the next presentation.
I, I mean, I would be glad to stay, but if, if you, if you don't need me to do that, I'll, I'll be glad to move on.
Thank you for coming out.
Thanks.
We'll move on to the second issue of tonight's agenda, future bond issue discussion. Discussion of the use of 1.5 million in Restricted Revenue Fund and other bond discussion.
Thank you, sir. The, the council will remember that, that earlier in this fiscal year, the city entered into negotiations on the possibility of the purchase of a building near City Hall here
here, uh, for use, uh, of an expanded community room type center, which morphed into, uh, a number of the elements that had been approved by the city council, uh, for a future civic center. And to that end, the council had indicated that the 1.5 million dollars that is in the restricted revenue fund could possibly be used for that. Staff, myself, would like to reintroduce the concept to the council, even though that particular facility, uh, did not pan out. Uh, as we do go into serious discussions relative to a no tax increase bond issue, I, I would have some concerns that, um, we, we could have a charge leveled against us, that we are letting money languish, uh, when we could be moving forward, uh, still with the exact same concept, and it, when, when the building, when 223 Municipal Circle was being proposed, I know a lot of eyebrows went up, because what was being proposed as far as our remodel was concerned, uh, was, were the exact same elements that the council was considering relative to Phase One, uh, concerning those civic center elements, and in fact, you all had gone through the exercise, uh, where you came up with the documentation and the diagrams that are actually in here, which are exactly the same as what was being proposed for 223. With, with the idea in mind that, that perhaps the council would like to begin using, uh, that 1.5 to, uh, begin the process again of getting a Phase One type facility, brought staff together to discuss possible recommendations to the council. And our initial discussion was pretty simple. It was, instead of 223, maybe we should be looking at 224 and 225 on Municipal Circle, and the, the elements would all be exactly the same, would give us the opportunity to design the building according to the standards that you all saw here, we would be starting from scratch. Um, that being said, during the course of the staff discussions, uh, the possibility of eliminating another line item, uh, from the future no tax increase bond issue, which was, uh, uh, some kind of a replacement for the Park House, uh, which is becoming an increasing liability. The Park House doesn't have too many seasons left in it as far as the summer seasons are concerned and summer camp, uh, two, maybe three. But that does get us to a no tax increase bond issue if you chose not to use, uh, the 1.5, but delay something there for actual use within the no tax increase bond issue. Uh, that being said, we also had some considerations, uh, from the very beginning, of course, it was the intention that the classroom areas of the activity center here on Municipal Circle would be used for an EOC. There were discussions relative to the fact that in one scenario, and one scenario only, uh, if there was a tornado that hit Municipal Circle, there is the possibility it would take out both City Hall and the, the EOC itself. Um, because there is no EOC in City Hall, don't necessarily know if that would matter, staff discussions did go further to talk about the fact that in that one scenario only, you may be running a risk, and that is why you see under the recommendation, which was then, I mean, that, as far as which spot we would like to see it, there, it was if a tornado hit. There are a number of other, a, a great number of other reasons why the EOC might be opened. Um, and the chief, the chief and I had the opportunity to discuss each of those, and in fact, under any other type of scenario where City Hall wasn't actually wiped out, there would probably be, it would probably be a good thing that the EOC could be walked to from City Hall back and forth. So, to that end, um, the, the, the item that recommended itself only to, uh, perhaps taking Phase One and putting it where the Park House is now, is the fact that we would be eliminating that $600,000 charge for the Park House as something else on top of these elements of the Activity Center. Um, yeah, and so what you saw in the final recommendation here was Phase One and Phase Two that had been presented to the city council, uh, with Phase Two being some sort of a gymnasium with, uh, possible smaller fitness center, a couple of classrooms added on to it, that i- if indeed, down the line, uh, with the bond issue, the council was going to be considering something for that location of the Park House that still eliminated the $600,000 need, like a gymnasium and two classrooms, which is another line item that's actually on your list for the no tax increase bond issue. Staff's recommendation would probably go to the synergies that are generated from putting those elements here at City Hall. It, it would include the original elements that we were talking about, the park staff would be here, so that during the day when the classrooms were being used for things that are traditionally used for the Park House, with the exception of camp, obviously, uh, they would be here to actually man that and oversee what was going on in there, the EOC would be there, the, during the evening, it could still be read, just everything that was proposed for 223, but that Phase One element would allow us to design it ourselves. Um, the, the initial, uh, option, Option A, is for here on City Hall, and you do see the diagram of how, and, and that's rudimentary, but it's kind of how Mike Crass oriented it, oriented it right here on, at Broadmoor and Johnson Drive and Municipal Circle. The parking would, of course, be on the Municipal Circle side in between, uh, we would buy two lots associated with that. That particular recommendation is a little bit higher, uh, than Rec Park, because the land at Rec Park is cheaper, uh, but it does put it closer here to City Hall. Um, it, in the, in the end, although what is in here recommends Option Two, there are a number of items that would have staff being neutral on a recommendation between the two, but moving forward with this particular element to spend the 1.5 million is actually the genesis of the conversation that we're having this evening, as to whether or not the council would like to see that and which location they'd like to see it in.
Mr. Mayor. Um, okay, I, and I'm, I'm going to hit a couple of things here. First of all, I, I've got a couple of questions. After doing some recent FEMA training, my definition, or what was presented to me as Emergency Operations Center, being put with an activity, fitness, and gymnasium space is not an apple to an orange, that's an apple to a pork chop. I mean, the, the Emergency Operations Center is for the city operations, and having people there is not, I mean, city people there is important, having a storm shelter is something completely different. This is, this is designed for the city, uh, to function. Um, so I'm seeing three things here, because, you know, one of the things we've done over the last two years, we earmarked that 1.5 million with the intent to do a civic center. And at, at, at a point about, about eight, nine months ago, we've kind of taken the, the idea that we've kind of separated out kind of the athletic versus the non-athletic components of these things, and we've kind of, you know, weighed those, and, and we want to value both of those. The problem is trying to merge some of this stuff, especially with an EOC, I think, I think we have three things here at this point. I, I don't think it's a good fit to shove this EOC thing. Um, I know that looking at, um, some plans I've saw that SEMA has done for storm shelters, you could build something across the street here that could withstand a tornado. And in fact, actually, one of the designs I saw had a tunnel that actually crossed over, so the city operations over here could go directly underneath, right over to that, and the tunnel itself actually serves somewhat for storm shelter purposes. So, I, I mean, for me, I, I'd be more inclined to carve that project out and have it be its own independent project. Um, in addition, you know, um, I, I'm looking at both alternatives, we have two independent projects here that we have talked about, planned for, um, looked at, you know, designs, um, both have independent value, both we want to do. Um, the key, though, here is we have 1.5 million setting where we need, and I agree, we need to do something with it. Nobody likes to loan money out if you've got money sitting in your pocket. But at the same time, you know, we've spent more time talking about the gathering space classroom project with the, and, and the MAC gyms and the, the athletic side and the Park House was more for next year's bond money. Um, there's some components to that we've not talked about, will take time to put together. Um, well, are the, the alternative A really is something we've already have partially in motion, and if we were going to use the 1.5, we'd be probably a little more geared to doing that portion of it first. So I think there's a timing issue here, I know there's a desire to do both, um, I don't think we need to rush the expenditure of the 1.5, especially since we already have a boat halfway down the stream, um, that we could utilize. So, um, for me, I, I mean, I respect the desire to do the EOC, but I think it's a third project, and I think it has its own independent weight that needs to be considered, funding considered, u- utility value considered, um, so I'll just throw that on the table and welcome anybody's comments.
I appreciate your comments, uh, but I do have some questions. What, and, and probably Chief Zimmerman also, uh, what would be required of an EOC center? What you...
Well, obviously, a, a lot of, of what will be happening in the EOC, depending on the level or the type of disaster, um, will be multi-jurisdictional, so, um, agencies such as SEMA or FEMA or, or any of those, um, also other local jurisdictions around here that might be coming in, fire department, um, we need a place to stand that up and have the technology where all of those different entities can operate, you know, whether it's computer access, telephones, uh, all of those sorts of things, where, you know, we can, we can provide information to the public, keep the public informed of what's happening, and so it, it's a central location where all of the, those different agencies can interact with each other, um, while the disaster is in the initial stages, and then ongoing, um, as well as we sort of scale down. So, it, it is a separate place where we wouldn't be disrupting, you know, right now, if we were to have to, um, have a situation where we had to stand up at EOC, we'd have to be in this room, this is the largest room, um, in City Hall, and so necessarily, we would be disrupting a lot of other operations within the city if we were utilizing this room, uh, as an EOC. So, it's someplace where we can set the technology and it can remain standing for the period of time that we need it to.
Okay, I've got a hypothetical question, and, gosh, I don't ever want to see another Joplin. But, um, if Joplin was to happen in Northern Cass County, where today would the, is there a plan for an EOC somewhere in this area that, that those, those functions can, can operate out of?
Sir, let me go.
Sure.
Um, our local emergency operation plan provides for a primary location and then secondary backup locations, depending on, um, depending on where that disaster might happen. Um, we have absolutely exercised all sorts of scenarios where City Hall is taken out, where, um, any one of our number of other, you know, department or city facilities are taken out, um, in order to be able to, you know, have the capability to continue to function. So yes, in answer to your, to your question, our primary location is here, you know, with, with the assumption that City Hall is still up, operational and functioning, this is our primary location, but we have exercised a number of others, uh, with city staff as well as our cert volunteers, police department, and others.
And, and just a, just as a point of clarification, when we were looking at 223, what we were thinking was, uh, nothing more than of the three classroom areas that can be opened up into the common area, if we did have to activate an EOC, whether it be in a new building or originally proposed for 223, is that one of those classroom areas would be outfitted to become the EOC if we needed it and it was activated. But it, it was kind of a, a disappearing act, you know, you had the storage in, in there and the things that you're needing are stored away only if you need to activate the EOC. So the same thing, we were thinking the same thing could apply to the new building that we were thinking about for 223, that was all.
Well, to kind of build on to that, you're looking at communication, you're looking at access, um, we need a facility that can properly get responders there to be able to deal with things. Having triage going on around it is a level of chaos, that actually, the training was indicating you do that elsewhere, um, to kind of separate those out, but you need the technology and utilities, but in addition, you need access. My concern is if you do it at Alternative Two, you have one road. If anything goes wrong with that road, you've wasted the EOC. Well, if you do it around here, you have multiple junctions that you can bring people in from multiple areas. So there's several reasons why, um, the alternate A, One, would be substantially better, in my opinion, than alternate Two, but we've also kind of blended this discussion into the civic center versus the Park House replacement. That's why I'm saying, I think we have three discussion points here, not a merger.
I have a question. In talking about an EOC and, and the need for one, and I certainly agree with that, um, we've talked about it from, so far, what would be a worst-case scenario, uh, mass catastrophe within the city, tornado, earthquake. Um, I know, Chief, you're familiar with the ICS system, and basically, your EOC becomes probably your command post. Um, would your intent to be used, let's say we decided to construct an EOC, standalone EOC, where, uh, facility such as been recommended, would you see that being used only in catastrophic situations, or much like the ICS system calls for, say like, um, a harvest festival, where you need to set up, because you have a large, uh, non-catastrophic, but a large gathering event, where you need a central location for a command post and resources and logistics?
Absolutely. There, there are a number of events, you know, large and small, where you do want to have a central location, as you said, with the ICS system, um, you, you just need certain people in place so that you can talk across the table to them instead of picking up the phone. So, um, you know, having an EOC is not just necessarily with that large-scale disaster as you're talking about.
And then to add, uh, just a, just a kind of another wrinkle, um, relative to the, uh, when we were actually thinking about the, the, the EOC component, that the building would be reinforced, uh, Mike probably, and I, and I probably should have caught, he, he calls it a storm shelter for Rec Park, persons who are in Rec Park. In the discussions we had at the staff level, it was actually, whatever building that's in, needs to be a reinforced building, if something happened to be going on in Rec Park. Since that point in time, um, Chief, do you want to tell them about the possibility with a MAC gym, and what you've been researching?
One of the things in, in participating in this discussion, um, about the possibility of, of creating a location, a shelter location, um, and, and we deal with this, and certainly, um, Ryan Murdock, you know, the Emergency Management Coordinator, um, you know, has worked with Parks and Rec and has had a number of conversations about, um, individuals who are in the park, who are using the park, and, and where they would go, you know, should there be some type of an emergency, uh, or some type of storm situation, um, we've had the National Weather Service come out, you know, talk to staff about, um, those types of issues, but, um, we keep coming back around to, there's no place to go. If, you know, if you're out in the park, um, and, and some type of, of weather event happens, there's really no place to go out there. Um, so that sort of led us to this portion of the discussion, um, where we're talking about, is there a, a location where individuals who are utilizing the park could go seek shelter? Um, and so, in these discussions, um, I actually had a meeting with, um, the folks, the Emergency Management Liaisons with the Mid-America Regional Council, to talk about creating, uh, or, or finding some sort of funding, um, either from FEMA or SEMA, um, that deals with pre-disaster mitigation. And, and there are certainly funds, you know, that are out there, um, to look at creating some sort of shelter. So in this discussion, as we talked about, you know, some sort of below-ground, um, gymnasium slash shelter, um, that would, um, you know, could both be utilized for, you know, sports activities and things like that, but could be also utilized as shelter, you know, if that occasion should arise out at the park. So, um, we, we have done some research in that area to look at, you know, if we were creating some sort of shelter, um, for individuals, you know, in the park, utilizing the park, would there be funding available to supplement that? And, and, uh, you know, our conversations with the folks down at the Mid-America Regional Council indicate that there definitely would be.
And the example that, uh, that Mr. Crass used, if you've been there, apparently the freshman center, was it the freshman center? Uh, that they called the pit, it's, it is actually below grade, so that would be the, the type of location that we're looking at. So if the council was thinking about, instead of, uh, option, instead of Option B, going with Option A, but down the road, looking at some sort of but down the road, looking at some sort of a gymnasium classroom-type area to, to take the place of the Park House that is over there, there's the possibility that within the bond issue money, the, the pricing that we've listed for that could be supplemented with SEMA FEMA money.
And I would really, I, I'm excited about that. I mean, the idea of, and I've been out there with baseball games with lightning strikes and things like that. And you're right, you feel a little vulnerable out there. And, you know, as a scout, I know that the scout camps have some really incredible storm shelters for the kid um that I, I can't remember if those were FEMA-sponsored or if that was grant money. But, uh, you know, so I would encourage that. See, again, I'm not opposed to any of these programs. I think there are three distinct things. I think there are three priorities. I think there are three independent priorities, but I think I would encourage staff to move forward. What are some distinct costs for each of those three and how can we slot these things in? I, I guess, I, I, the only caution I would have tonight is, you know, we've already started on alternate one for the 1.5 million, which doesn't mean we can't change, but we are mid-stream on that. But I think we'd get some better costs, a little deeper discussion, present more information to us, and then we get these things lined up. Because these are three distinct, well, I'd say four if we include a storm, the storm shelter or a merger with Park House, but I think everybody gets the idea that I think we then line those up and, and as we, we make those a priority, especially after next April.
Charlie?
In the history of Raymore, we had a tornado that went up by Gore Road in the 1890s. And then in the nineteen, about 60s, we had a tornado that came through about on the area of Hubox Hill. And we've also had some floods to where we could not get through on South Madison at all because the rains came and there was simply no way to get through there. So I would be opposed to using that as a major area because I know that that road can be blocked very easily. And like you said here, that we've got two or three areas to get out of. I'd like to see us do something here at municipal center so that we, uh, circle, so that we can get off a dead center and get that, get this area built up. We promised the people, before we ever promised them about a meeting room, that we would do something here and I think we should get it done. Now, as far as having, I remember about, must have been about 15 years ago, that they had some sort of an emergency and people had to go to the Methodist church and we housed them there for three days and because they could go to the basement. They're not marrying many places where you can go to a basement. You talk about the children, but what about all the people around here? We've got 20,000 people and how many of them have basements that can go to in case of a tornado, floods or anything else? So we need to think about that, but then as I understand it, um, the fire department has emergency plans. The power and light company, they have emergency plans. So there's a lot of emergency plans already on there and we would just be adding to it. But I'd like to see us do something that would improve the commercial area here around the municipal center. I think that's more important and more long-lasting and I would be in favor of that. Of course, you know that when we're talking about the big bond issue, as far as I'm concerned, it's got to be roads and nothing else but roads. If we want people to come in here and buy and sell, we've got to have roads so they can get here.
Mr. Mayor, may I say something in regard to Councilwoman Hubox? Um, question or, or comment about shelters? I will let you know that, that we are in the process with the local emergency operation plan uh that we'll be bringing before you all, that has to be approved by SEMA every year, that we are vetting shelters throughout the community. And what we're doing is we're working with the Red Cross and they come in with a checklist to make sure that the shelter meets all the requirements. And so we're working with a number of locations throughout our community to make sure that they can be opened and operated as a shelter that has been approved by the Red Cross. So that will all be information that we'll be providing to the council about the LEOP and, and those shelters that we've worked with the Red Cross on, so.
I'm curious on this lot at Broadmoor Johnson Parkway. How much space does that give us at $200,000? Is that just a, um, the building that we're shown here in a parking lot? Or does that give us some room for expansion, um, like a wing of City Hall or something of that nature?
The, the, what you see on the per, and the, the prices that are listed are con, you know, we hope conservatively high. Uh, the 200,000 would include not only purchase of the end lot where you see the, but also the lot next to it. And we would need that lot next to it, a portion of it for parking, certainly.
Another question about this, um, EOC. You see a lot of, when cities have these catastrophes, you see mobile command centers set up. Do we have anything that we, uh, to put anything so we could bring a mobile command center in and have that?
He doesn't even have to look down here. Um, absolutely. We have worked and we used grant funding, SEMA grant funding last year to completely retrofit our communications trailer. So if City Hall actually were disabled and we were unable to dispatch, continually dispatch from this location any longer, um, we can run the entire operation from the mobile communications trailer now. So, um, we do have mobile, mobile command center, absolutely.
And what if that was damaged? Is there a process to bring other communities' mobile command centers or how, how does that work?
We actually have a memorandum of understanding with the Kansas City Police Department for a variety of things. I mean, not, not only their equipment, but their tactical units and things like that. Um, but South Patrol now is the backup communications center for the entire region. So, um, you know, just right up 71 Highway, we would be able to set up our operation there if we were unable to operate here.
I'd like to see us look at option A and see if that can't be doable for us.
On option A, is there any reason we can't just build a basement in this thing and then have it serve both functions? As an EOC center as well as this activity center? Is that something we considered?
I think that sounds logical. Um, but I'm going to share some of the comments that I've heard over the years since I've been on council. It's that, you know, when they built City Hall was shortly right there at the same time that I moved here, that there was substantial rock underneath here and it drove the cost up of, of this building. You know, and I, I'm going off of folklore or stories that have been told to me. Uh, so I would think that that kind of condition could exist across the street also. So I, I, I think it's, it's an unknown, but I reasonably would have to expect that it probably exists over there too. But I, I totally am on board with, with your thinking there.
Well, out where we are, you get a lot of church, you don't get a lot of, of, of heavy rock that you get in the lower area and we're the highest elevation in the county.
Well, then I've got three-fourths of the rock of Raymore in my yard. The, uh, if I could try to condense what I think the council, the direction the council is going, um, it seems like for the most part, you're, you're thinking activity center component here on Municipal Circle. The, uh, staff could, staff would, would like to do the following for you all. Start trying to trim down the prices with the consideration that what we are actually looking for is the activity center components that are shown in the diagrams, uh, both with an EOC element that's detailed out as far as here's the activity center and if we put the EOC at the activity center, here are the costs associated. And without an EOC element, but with, obviously that would all be one less. You know, here's construction, here's the EOC elements that would go in and disappear when we did not need them. Um, the pricing out a standalone EOC at another site, not Recreation Park. Possibly here on the circle even, at a different location on the circle. A MACGEM element at the Park House site uh to take the place of the Park House and outline the details of what we would be asking for, for possible SEMA FEMA grant funding associated with that and start trimming down those costs as well. With, with the goal being that this would be approved and be begun prior to an April bond issue so that we could tell the people we are using the money. Is that a good synopsis, do y'all think?
With the addition that at the Park House location, you mentioned that there's a storm shelter component or factors considered?
Right. Yeah, yeah. As far as outlining the details of the grant funding, right. What we would do is give you the cost for the unit, but the details of what we could possibly be asking for in grant funding to offset the no-tax increase bond amount that is being spent on that.
One, I, I, I agree with all that 100%. Something I think's important to remember and I agree, I think the priority probably needs to be here at Municipal Circle for the initial elements. We cannot give up on that Parks House. A, it's got to be replaced and B, we want to remember if we can work in that FEMA or SEMA grant money over there that we won't be checking Raymore residency at the door if we have a major event come through here. We're going to be housing people from Northern Cass County, from our southern borders over here. Plus our future annexation looks to both the south and the east. We've got a little bit more of a central location there if we end up with two of them. So I agree with the timing that, that you laid out, but we cannot forget that second element, even if it's got a weight behind. Thought, food for thought.
Mr. Crass just indicated that as long as it's a below-grade building and it's strong enough to catch the Public Works building as it's rolling across the field towards it. All, all the Public Works guys just kind of looking at the door, let me in, let me in.
All right. That is, uh, oh, we have another. Uh, is there any other?
Um, the, this is that component relative to the future no-tax increase bond issue. If any, we are working on the Johnson Drive, uh, the item as, that you had added uh at the last meeting, council member. Um, but if there was any other discussion relative to the no-tax increase bond issue that you all might have?
Kind of, kind of two points. Uh, one, at our last work session, we didn't have, we only had four here. So it might be topical to bring up the, the timing issue or did you want to wait till later on that one?
Um, staff, uh, when there were four here, we did, thank you, sir. Uh, staff, when there were only four here, uh, did talk to, to those who were here relative to, um, the fact that the school district has indicated a stronger possibility of going with April than August. That's not set in stone yet, but a stronger possibility. The, and it will be a no-tax increase bond issue. Superintendent Monsis and I talked briefly at the end of a joint meeting about the possibility of the synergies that would be realized by having both of them on. I, I was telling the council members present, um, I have seen that work twice and I have seen that not work one time. Uh, as you all may remember, I was deputy superintendent of schools in a school district and we actually had that with some Kansas City bond issues that were on. Um, two of those were April and one of those was August. The, uh, we, we won one in April, we lost one in April and we won the August. The, and in all three cases, we tried to draw on synergies of no-tax increase bond issues that were associated. The, the, if I were to say we, we lost the one, uh, when I was with the school district, it was because there were a number, even though it was no tax increase bond issue, uh, there were a number of city items on that were controversial as far as the projects that they were doing. Um, I don't necessarily know that there would be anything controversial, but I, I, I can tell you that we, we did draw the good synergy from, with no increase in your tax rate, here is all the work that's being done between these two bond issues. Uh, that being said, it seemed like the council members who were present were pretty favorable to continuing to plow ahead with the consideration for April. If something were to come up, April would be the earliest day of 2015, 16 would be the earliest date we would go. But the council would not, we could get all of the legwork and the, what we wanted to do done before the bond issue, before you all had to vote on the bond issue. And up to the point in time where you had to pass an ordinance in December to do that, December of 2015, it would be staff's recommendation that you continue to consider this full steam ahead within April. And if something does look like it would be a wrinkle ahead of time, your, your ordinance could be changed at the last minute to say August.
Are you going to tell us how much we would get back if we didn't pass either one of those?
Well, yeah, all of that'll be, yeah, we'll give you all that information.
Um, I listened to, well, I listened to half of the meeting and then something happened with my YouTube and I didn't hear the rest of it. But, um, it's my belief that we definitely need to go at the same time as the district or before, but certainly not after. Um, I don't think we can afford that risk. I think that would put us, if, if they do theirs first and we don't, um, I think that puts us in an awful risk to the what-ifs. And if, if there are negative ground swells for the district, they could get stronger after one passes and then we try to do another one, in my opinion.
Thank you, sir. That, that was my comment as well. I, I think they'll work well as companion bills, given that they're both no-tax bond increases. I think, uh, the, the picture that will be drawn would be, you know, we're getting new schools or new facilities from the schools. The city's going to take on a number of projects. And I'm afraid in the reverse, if we go after the school, such as council member Burka said, that we will see a lot of voting hangover, if you will. Didn't we just vote for this like three months ago or six months ago? And so I think our best bet is to go at the same time. And just an FYI, I wanted to insert this. I asked Mr. Fearborn to, um, he, he was being very liberal on, uh, asking for additional projects if anybody had any and one for consideration, consideration alone, because it would be, I think, of certainly interest to the city and economic development. And we've talked about it over the decades and that would be to include the, um, building or formation of the new Kentucky Road um from where it ends now on the, uh, south side there, just across from Firestone up to where it would connect, I don't know, about halfway between my house and the barn, I think, something like that. So that we could at least get the price list on that, see what that would look like in comparison to the others. Um, again, I wanted, I asked for him to put that on there. He talked to me about it a little bit and I said, "That's all right, take it off." He goes, "No, I think we need to put it on." So we, I think he's going to put it on there for me.
The, the list that the council has in front of them currently, and we, we are, staff is ready at any point in time if the council were to ask. The list that the council has in front of them is an amalgam of items that staff has been approached with over the course of literally since the last bond issue went through. And so we wanted to give the council the opportunity to see the list. There, there is no, um, agenda that goes with the list. Uh, and at this time, staff really doesn't have, um, recommendations because the, the items listed could even morph within the project themselves as we go through. We wouldn't want the council to feel that, that we were trying to- to feel that, that we were trying to steer a conversation to say, "This is the project. This is the exact project. This is what the project needs to look like." Tonight's a perfect example. You know, we, there were a couple of recommendations on there, but we've kind of morphed into, you know, a, a different kind of a vision for that. And staff always wants the council to, to understand that, that we're here to provide the data and a little bit of guidance on, on history and background, but, but you all are steering.
Any other comments? Is there a reason to go in executive session?
Not tonight, sir.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
I love the new paint striper. Man, it looks fantastic. If you slept through it when I got here, it looks great. Got to put that in there.
So, you like the paint striper?
I do very much.
It's noted. All right, then, we're in adjournment. Thank you, everybody.